Good evening. I'd like to call the order tonight's meeting of the Independence Township ZBA. It is April 5th, 2023. I'd invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Brian, if we could have a roll call, please?
Mr. Auger?
Present.
Mr. Eppink?
Present.
Mr. Gally?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
And Mr. Zurich.
Here.
Great. Gentlemen, we have before us an agenda. Let me start off by saying that this meeting is being held in the Township Hall. It's also available to join via Teams, Microsoft Teams, and that link is posted online. We have an agenda which was also posted online and is before us. If we could have a review of the agenda and any changes or motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is accepted and we'll move on. So we have a number of different parts in our meeting tonight. We'll start off with a public comment. The public comment is for anybody online or in the room who has anything to talk to the Township about that is not currently on tonight's agenda. We'll then move into new business. We have two cases which I'll call forward under new business, and then we have no unfinished business, and then lastly, we'll have approval of last month's meeting, a review of the minutes from last month, a discussion, and an adjournment. So if there's anybody in the audience or online who would like to approach the Board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda, now would be the time. Anybody in the room? Anybody online? Brian, it looks like we have a few people online. Anybody online like to discuss anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I will close that public comment. We have no unfinished business, and so we'll move right into new business. Again, we've got two cases tonight. What we'll do is I'll call the case. I'll read the request of the variance into the record. I'll describe at least briefly what the application is asking for. We'll then ask the applicants to come up to the podium, give us your name and your address, and then just explain to us what it is, what your intent in terms of your project or your property, why a variance, either dimensional use variance, is required or requested. And then we'll ask questions. We'll open it up to the public for comment, and our goal is to understand really what exactly it is that you're trying to do. Why is that different from our ordinance, and is there a hardship or something that makes that unique that may in fact justify a variance change? Anybody else who comes up when we open up for the public, anybody who speaks tonight? If you could come up to the podium and give us your name and your address. If you haven't written it down over there, please do so tonight, and that way we'll make sure the minutes are correct. And I guess if anybody online speaks, we'll get your name and address as well. So with that, I will call case number 23-002, John and Serena Wedeman, requesting three total variances. The first is a variance from Section 5.06 in order to construct an accessory structure in front of their home. The second is a 29-foot westerly side yard variance. The third is a 21-foot variance from the southerly side of the property line, both from Sections 4.09 in the ordinance. This is for a home, an existing home located at 7928 Dixie Highway, which is in the R1R Rural Residential District. See, the applicants are here tonight. If you guys want to come on up. And again, so I know that Mr. Wedeman will explain the situation. It's an unusual piece of property in the sense of at least its parcel configuration. It's on Deer Lake. You have an existing home, and again, you're seeking three variances, one for an accessory structure in front of the home. Typically, our ordinance mandates that any type of accessory structure is located at the rear of the home. In this case, they're asking to position it in front of the existing home, and then there's two side yard setbacks requests.
Sure.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Give us your name and address, please.
John Wedeman, 7928 Dixie Highway, Clarkston.
Great. So again, you're asking for three variants. Why don't you just tell us what you've got going on at your home and what's being requested?
So based on what you see on the screen, the topography and unusual shape of the property are pretty unique. In addition, you know, we're zoned at like 3.6 acres. Actually, probably two of that is in the water. So without building, it'd be very hard to put it any further forward because it would actually be in the lake or close to the lake's edge. So really, the hardships that we're dealing with are the unusual shape of the property, limitations based on the building envelope, the location of the current home limits the modifications that we can do. We prefer not to tear the home down and start over just because of the impact that it has on, you know, everything around us, tearing down that house that close to the lake. We're on a current slab due to the high water table, so we have to deal with the water issues. We're trying to address those. Really, what we're trying to accomplish is to gain some storage area. Being the house on a slab, we have no basement. We have a two-car garage and an upstairs master. My wife's getting quite a bit older. I want to make sure that she has the ability of a first-floor master, so we really want to add the garage to add storage. We're pretty anal retentive about leaving stuff in the yard. I don't know if any of you guys have the ability to come to the property today, but there's, you know, we don't have any trailers, boats, jet skis outside the property. Everything is in external storage off-site. We'd like to continue to avoid that, thus the reason for the accessory building and the garage. We're not adding any bedrooms. Again, just trying to address some needed storage for living on the lake. We know that there's been many adjacent properties, so I think there's precedent based on what we're trying to do. So hopefully, we're not asking for anything unusual for where we're at, and we're trying to keep everything in touch with like what Deer Lake represents, nice to the property, not have our neighbors looking at, you know, stuff outside, thus the need for the extra storage.
Great. Thank you. So to break it up a little bit, because it's almost two separate projects, is you've got an existing home, and it looks like you're putting two additions on that home. You're putting an expansion on the front or facing west, looking at the plans that were submitted. It looks like an expansion on a bedroom or remodeling to put a bedroom down there, and then you're also adding a three-car garage, again, kind of to the front of the house or the opposite side of the lake. And Brian, if I'm right, there's two-dimensional variances. It looks like the first is really in relationship to the existing home. Just to bring it into compliance, the home was probably built before we had ordinances, and so that front corner of the home isn't changing, but one of the variances is in relationship to just kind of acknowledging that that front corner is less than the required 50-foot setback.
Correct.
And then if I'm also correct on the second variance, it looks like it's the second dimensional variance would be on the kind of the corner of the new garage facing west.
Correct.
Again, both of those are side yard setbacks. They're supposed to be 50-foot according to our ordinance, but in this case, one already is not 50-foot, and then the garage is requesting the second. And then the third variance is really kind of a separate issue. It looks like you're building a new storage unit or storage building, I should say, and because of the position of your existing home, there's really, you're saying, not a lot of room between the house and the water, so it almost by default, if you're going to have that, the building has to go in front.
Correct. Correct. And I think if you look at, I picture the variances we look for for the garage to the house, right? There's, the other one's existing. We're not going to add, we're not going to increase anything. We're not getting closer to the lake. We're not going to change any of that. We're just adding that front garage to that piece. Pardon me?
Behind the house.
Behind the house, yeah, away from the lake.
Away from the lake, right, facing west. I guess I'll just ask a couple of questions, and I'll open up to the Board as well and then to the public. But in terms of the accessory building, again, you've provided architectural plans, and both the modifications to the existing home and the new accessory structure look like they're going to be really, really nice. What's the intent of the accessory? It doesn't really have garage doors, so it doesn't look like it's going to be necessarily at least conventional garage doors. It doesn't look like it's going to be conventional garage. It's got some nice windows, so it's architecturally, is it going to be like a living space?
No, no. It's going to be storage for, again, in the winter, our boats. We don't have a lot, but we have a ski boat, jet skis that are currently stored off-site, a little workshop, quite honestly, today. We don't have room for lawn equipment, right? We can't even, if I wanted to cut my own grass, I can't put a lawnmower at our house. So I'm thinking lawn equipment, lake storage, strictly storage, but we wanted to match the character of the house so that it's all cohesive, so that, you know, and in tune with what I think our neighbors expect on Deer Lake.
Side, okay, it does have a garage door.
It does.
So I saw those sliding ones, but these are, there is a garage door on the side. So it's, no one's going to be living in there?
No.
Okay. All right. With that, I'll open up to the Board. Alan, do we want to start down on the far right?
Is there anybody in the public that might want to speak on it that's here?
Do you want to do that first?
Yeah, please.
Okay. We're going to postpone or hold off on comments from the Board and open it up to the public. Is there anybody in the room who would like to speak on this case? Seeing, now is there anybody online who would like to speak on the first case on Dixie Alan, your stall tactic has not worked.
Okay. Brian, did we get any calls from anybody on this?
None whatsoever.
Okay. When I did visit the site last week, it is a very unique site, very topographic. If I had my brothers, I'd rather see it right up by the cul-de-sac at the end of the street. I feel that it's in the line of sight from the neighbor next door.
You mean as far as the accessory building?
Yeah.
And I'll be clear. So I think, and Mark, maybe you can comment on this, we put it within the current building envelope.
Right.
But we're really, you know, to be honest, we can move that up. We're pretty open.
It wasn't advertised. We can't go anything.
Okay.
We can go lesser, but we can't go more.
Okay.
And that would be putting it in the setbacks, but the other house is elevated on the hill too, which is going to be looking over the top of it. I do like the architectural drawings on it to kind of match your house and the details. And as far as the house additions, being on a slab myself, I can see why you'd want the added room. You do have a very clean site down there, and you didn't build the house. You've been there 12 years, they say.
Yes, sir.
So I have, I have nothing.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Jim?
It's a very challenging site to do anything with, and I think based on the configuration, you've done about as good a job as you can. I've never seen a garage with sliding glass doors. And the patio, I assume you're going to be using that?
The, in the accessory building?
Yeah.
It's really going to be storage. I guess we're mostly doing that building, we want it to be storage, but we want it to be aesthetically matching the home, and we want it to kind of tie in the whole property. So I don't want it to look like a barn.
My name is Mark Postal. I'm the designer of the architectural drawings, and I'm at 7520 Allen Road in Clarkston. My intent was, if they had a large gathering, that that building could be used as a recreation area, eating area, and an outdoor entertaining area. I did this sort of thing on a large home on Lake Orion, and the owner said it was the best thing I ever did. So they enjoy it a lot. It keeps people from going in and out of the existing house all day long while they're entertaining on the lake. And it just, I thought it would be handy to do something like that there and not make it look like a garage, make it look a little more.
You're just going to figure out a place to park the cars.
Well, there is a garage door, and the cars would have to be moved out if it was a party or something. That's all I had to say.
No, I think it blends well with the area, and like I say, you've worked well with the existing setbacks.
Thank you. Mr. Gally?
I'm going to kind of just echo the comments of Alan and Jim on the home addition. You know, the one is obviously a housekeeping item to bring it in compliance. The other one, the coming off the front, I mean, it's pretty much blocked from everybody else by the hill and the existing vegetation and trees. Brian, you mentioned you didn't get any formal cards or calls. Have you talked to the neighbor up the hill?
Yeah.
And obviously, he's not here or he didn't call.
Yeah. Our neighbors have no issues. I mean, they've been pretty supportive. I think everybody wants to see the improvements in the area in general, you know, so.
And on the accessory structure, yeah, it's obviously aesthetically better than we see most accessory structures, except, you know, maybe your brother's, but, you know.
Well, I have to one-up him, Brian.
Yeah. It's going to look great. Just, yeah, I just want to make sure it doesn't turn into a living space, so.
No. I don't like my family, so we're good.
Mr. Zurich?
Just, I just want to double check. You're going to add a garage that's roughly 24-foot by 33-foot and an exterior building that's 28-foot by 36-foot. Does that sound right?
Roughly.
Roughly?
I think it's 1,000 square feet in the accessory building, and I'd say probably close to the same in the garage.
I don't have any concerns. All right. Since we're a little out of order, I'll open it up to the public again. Is there anybody in the room that has any additional comments for this case? Anybody online with any additional comments for this case? All right, seeing none, we can ask additional questions or we could have a motion?
I'll make a motion in case 23-002 to approve the request as published, acknowledging the petitioner's answers that there'll be no living space and also probably no plumbing in the structure, and following the architectural plans submitted on the house and the detached garage.
We have a motion to have support?
Can we have a discussion?
Yeah.
I think we should add that the topography of the site and proximity to the lake are the hardships for the variances.
I'll make that part of my motion, that it's the, he has a hardship with the topography of the property.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. We've amended. We've got a second on the.
Yeah, I was going to second with the amendment.
I do have a question. I just want to ask the applicant too. Alan, you added something into the motion that makes sense to me but hadn't been brought up in discussion. We had talked about no living inhabitable space in the accessory structure, but we hadn't talked about plumbing, and you added into the motion that there wouldn't be any plumbing.
Because I didn't want it to become a living space.
Totally get that, but there may be other, you know, stationary tubs or something. So I just at least want the applicant to either acknowledge that that's fine, or had you planned on any type of plumbing, I think we're clear, and the Township has ordinances against that becoming an inhabitable space.
The only thing I'd like to keep up on, we were thinking of radiant heat flooring, which means I need to bring water to the site to radiant heat the floors, and gas to heat electric. So other than those things, no sewage, no, you know, yeah, no.
So maybe that's how you would consider, Alan, is no sewage or septic hookup? Would that satisfy?
Yes.
If you want to, do we need to amend the motion and clarify that?
Yeah, then we probably need to vote on that amendment. Yeah, that no water, I mean, no sewage. What else was there?
Just the sewage, I think.
No sewage capabilities at the accessory structure.
And I'll continue to second with the amendment.
Should we vote on the amendment?
I'm completely off with Robert's rules, so maybe we should vote on the amendment.
Yeah.
We have a motion, we have an amendment to the motion. We're voting on the amendment to include into the motion no septic facilities within the sanitary, within the accessory structure.
Yep.
But some freshwater plumbing or heating plumbing, water plumbing is allowed. Do you have to add that?
So I will make that a motion. Do you want me to just make a separate motion? I'm really confused now.
Should I start over again?
Just start over with a fresh moment. I got a question.
If he brings water in so that he can heat the building, and you maybe want to put in a tub or something?
Or a spigot to wash your feet off or something. Yeah, I mean, you know, it's a gardening shed if I want to, but really, I was thinking...
Where is that going to discharge?
Under the ground.
Like your furnace is doing your...
Unless it's a closed loop or something. Yeah, let me ask my builder, Steve. If I put in radiant flooring, it'd be closed loop, right?
No, not necessarily.
If you could come up to the...
Steve Schuster, 9260 Windermere, Clarkston. If you put any type of mechanical heating in, you have a boiler, radiant tube heat, et cetera, you're going to have to have some type of blow-off valve on it. That's going to be required to go into a drain, and typically, they're not going to want you to dump it into the ground. There's something that happens to the water when it gets hot that causes some chemicals, so it would want to go in a sewer. And I do think so...
Well, there's no sewer on the site.
Then it would go into a septic. It'd have to go into a sanitary.
That's why I was saying, but that goes against what Alan is trying to add into the motion.
But if I can say though, if it's approved and it's an accessory structure, are you, is an accessory structure allowed to be a habitable building?
No.
So therefore, if it's approved as an accessory structure, it's a done deal? And if they want to do something later, that's a code violation anyways. That's a whole separate issue, so it's policed on its own. It's kind of a moot point.
I see what you're saying, Brian. I guess from an enforcement, I just want to make sure that the Township has enough enforcement capabilities.
I think so. With the no living space requirement, I think that pretty much covers it.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, and I would say the petitioner has represented that that's his intent in the meeting.
Okay, so we're probably backed then, Alan, to your original motion before I...
No, that's fine. That's fine. The clarity, and it's very good.
So we have a motion. We have a second. It was amended. We're not going to include the reference to septic. Alan had already stated that it would not be an inhabitable space and the other conditions that are picked up. So with that, Brian, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Auger?
Yes.
Mr. Eppink?
Yes.
Mr. Gally?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
And Mr. Zurich.
Yes.
Your variance has passed, so good luck with the addition. Obviously, continue to work with the Building Department to get all the permits and everything.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thanks. All right. With that, we will call up the second case, case number 23-003, SNL Autobody and Glass petitioner requesting just a single variance, a 2.75-foot side yard variance from Section 4.17B in order to construct the addition on an accessory garage. This is at a commercial property at 4712 Sashbaugh Road, which is in the C1 local commercial area. I will say, as applicant approaches, that I have worked in the past with applicant Larry Smith on a different project. I was hired as a design consultant, so we worked with that. We worked together probably five years ago. I don't think there's any conflict from my point of view, but I did want to make you guys aware of that. And if you'd like me to recuse myself, I'd be happy to do so, or we can hear the case.
I see. Myself personally, I see no problem.
All right. Mr. Smith, how are you?
Larry Smith, 4569 Edgewood, Clarkston, Michigan.
So you own SNL Autobody on Sashbaugh, kind of in the Curbs. You've got a couple of buildings there. You provided an awful lot of information in the packet in terms of upgrading your technology, which had some dimensional, internal dimensional requirements with height, so you couldn't, it looks like you've got a side building there that has maybe four or five garage doors and openings. You're adding essentially an additional one on the eastern side, extending the building to provide the internal space for your new equipment.
Correct.
And in the commercial zone, we've got a rear, I'm sorry, a side setback of 15-foot.
Correct.
That building, if I looked at the dimensions that you provided on its western side, the front side closest to Sashbaugh, it's right at 15-foot, but the property line already cuts in a little bit, and it's at existing on its eastern side. It's about, well, I forget the numbers now, but about 13-foot. You're going to add about 20-foot to that building, which pinches it a little bit more. So you're, at the end of the day, the new corner will be about 12 feet 3 inches from the property line. So it's, there's already an existing dimensional variance. I don't know if it was approved or not, but it was built that way. This would add and essentially encroach about another nine inches into what it's already at, and this with a variance, should it be voted on, would essentially build, bring not only the new corner into compliance, but that existing corner. All right? Terms of materials, those are good-looking buildings. They look like they're kind of a wood siding on the front, and is it wood on the side and block on the back or?
Correct.
Okay. Block on the back?
Block on the back.
And when you go east, you're really just bringing it closer to your own property, right?
Correct.
You've got a yard back there, so you're not encroaching further onto a resident or anybody to these.
Correct.
Okay. With that, I'll open up to the Board. Maybe, Ken, why don't we start with any questions you have?
Yeah, the only question is kind of a general, your future, what do you think's going to happen with your facility here in the next 10 years?
What do I think's going to happen?
Yeah.
I've been there 42. My son's been there 15, so I expect it to stay in the family.
As far as expansion?
I guess it depends what happens around me. If the Dairy Queen ever actually goes for sale, I would obviously try to buy that. It's been an eyesore, in my opinion, for 40 years, and Township has rarely enforced anything upon it. We've had, last year, we had 15 ice cream trucks there all year long. It looked like a vagabond, but they've moved out, and now it's been rented to somebody else. The next building over is owned by a plumber, which is on an 8,800 square foot site that's just getting ready to go for sale, and he's approached me to purchase that. I have told him I'd be interested. At that point in time, I would have to see if there's anything that could be done with that piece, or it's a completely invaluable piece of property, so.
You're talking about the little house?
There is no house. That's all commercial. Two over is a little building that has, that houses a plumby, for a plumber for, since 1984, '85.
On the north of the Dairy Queen?
On lot 156?
I don't have my glasses, Jim.
Yeah, that's 156.
Oh, that's the one I meant.
Right next to the auto, the spray.
This one right there.
Yeah.
And he's only about five feet off.
Yeah, he doesn't have much.
So right now, you don't plan on coming with another variation, variance in the next couple of years?
No.
Okay, I have no more questions.
But I'll be honest. We all know, cars have changed. Technology has changed. Ten years ago, nobody thought there'd be electric cars everywhere. We wouldn't have to do ASDS, which is what this building's for, which is for all the safety features on the vehicles. You know, if we're going to be competitive in fixing cars, we're going to have to stay level with them. But as of now, that's where we're at, and I don't see it changing from there, so.
Good, Ken. Brian?
I just, I think Mr. Smith runs a good business. I've never heard any complaints from anybody in the Township, really. I've been driving by it for 40 years, and I don't think I've ever seen a blade of grass out of place. He keeps an impeccable shop, and it, you know, there's no junk cars laying around, no parts laying around. It's, you know, not an eyesore at all, so I don't think it, the variance negatively impacts the area. As we know, that whole area, even the residential portions, are pretty much all full of variances, so, yeah, I support the petition.
Jim?
I've had the misfortune to use Mr. Smith's services a few times, and he's done a fine job. And unfortunately, if he had built the damn building square to the property line, we wouldn't be here.
Yeah, you know, I'm not, it's square to the other building, Jim.
That's true.
It's square to the building that faces.
No, I have, I think it makes all sense in the world. It's about the only place you can add that.
Appreciate it.
Alan?
No, I'm just going along with everybody else. I think with technology changing, he's got a particular hardship trying to keep up with the technology, the site. His existing has been there for years. His existing building almost sits on the street on Clinton, so in walking around the building, at least he's still got... So in walking around the building, at least he's still got space to maintain the northwest side, which would be the block back part, which is well-maintained. And as far as I know, there's no calls or anything from anybody.
No. No complaints.
Yep. So I don't have a problem.
Okay, great. At that point, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak on this case? Anybody online that would like to speak on the second case on our agenda? Hearing none, we'll close public comment and ask for a motion, gentlemen.
I guess I'll try again. So in the case of 23-003 SNL Bobby Auto Glass, we're granting him the petition for the side yard variance. It's just the one item, right?
Correct.
And the reasoning is the hardship of the space of the property that he has and that he's looking to maintain services to modern cars. So he's trying to fulfill that obligation to his customers.
So we have a motion and we have support? Motion and support. Brian, if we get a roll call, please.
Mr. Epping?
Yes.
Mr. Gally?
Yes.
Mr. Charle?
Yes.
Mr. Zerik?
Yes.
And Mr. Auger?
Yes.
Congratulations. Sounds like a nice addition.
Appreciate it.
Glad you're.
I'll bring my services.
Drive carefully, right?
Right.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen, that concludes our new business. We've gone through the rest of our agenda and we now have review and approval of the minutes from March 1st, which were in our packets.
If there's no problems with the minutes, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 1st, 2023, as presented.
We have a motion. I support. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. With meetings still open, we are now on item I, which is discussion. The discussion tonight on.
Well, if nobody has anything to say, I'm going to say something. Did anybody on the board watch the last board trustees' meeting last month?
I did not.
Our board, about one of our cases about a month ago was slammed and should have, one of the trustees said we should have denied the case right off the giddyup. This was at the board meeting, televised to all the citizens, same as ours is. I felt it was out of, out of line and out of place. The petitioner came well-prepared. Came with a petition by citizens in this township. We are here to help the citizens keep up their property values, health, safety, and welfare. That's our main job. And uphold the zoning laws to the best that can be in an old, established community. And I just took offense to it and just bringing it to you, no discussion, just if you want to watch the board meeting.
What case was, what was it?
Pardon me?
What case was it?
I'd rather not say.
But it was from their March meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I will ask for motion to adjourn. Is there anybody online here that wants to bring something up? Well, we've had that opportunity in the public comment as well as with each case. So the discussion phase is really intended to be for the board or if Brian wants to relay anything from the township to us.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 6:34.
I'll support. Support. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, gentlemen. Thank you.